Is it on which?
You too.
Just can you, just one? Yeah.
Didn't the word go out that everybody was here?
Hey Heather, these two don't need it, these two seats don't need it.
Man, you've been working too hard.
I'm great, thank you for asking though, I'm not cool that way.
You've been on that floor every day, every day. Well, I'm proud, that's great, I'm not, I'm not funny.
No, I didn't think you were, I didn't take it that way.
You've been working hard every day.
It's what I'm here to do, I wish some other people would take it seriously like that and be up to.
Well, they really do. They just don't find you on the other side, that's all.
I hear ya, I hear ya.
Somebody's got a speaker.
That's what I do.
And you did.
I never hesitate to do that. Thank you.
I think it's a two page or page one, page two. It says in that page one, page two. You're doing two different things.
Oh, he's working from the other end.
Right, I guess this is the direction that the speakers are gonna take, they've got the camera pointed at them.
Rumors abound with Tom DeLay.
I got the first two of them, yeah.
How'd they get the money from him?
No, no time, I don't care about that. No time.
Should've gone anyway.
That can't happen.
You're the one that, you're the one that.
Are you sure? I'm, I'm fine, I'm just gonna be fine.
There's no more chairs available, I'm gonna race over.
I don't think I've thought about it.
Put two people down, each one gotta fight.
He'll still get a big break. Well, depends on how you buy it, well, these guys.
I tried, I tried that.
I know, so did I.
Good, 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 good.
They smell money before they go.
Exactly.
They haven't got chairs. What these names rock on, I guess Rockwell gotta choose. There's some chairs along the back wall.
Just that long of dinner?
Excellent. We don't serve them late.
You go with it.
Yeah.
So who gets to come?
I do, I found a guy under the table and I come.
My wife and the big ones, you know, fighting. We didn't fight.
He always gets it, he always gets it.
Not as bad people credit cards, you really can't handle it all, can you?
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for attending tonight's public hearing. We are glad that you're all here and are part of the conversation tonight. A few housekeeping details if we get started that I'd like to just go over tonight. Uh, we would ask that we would keep all public demonstrations, interruptions, any, uh, any props that you might have, uh, keep them to yourselves so that we can continue on through the evening and get as many people through the process and speaking to us as possible. With interruptions, that only slows down the process and we have fewer people who are able to actually give testimony tonight. And it would be our desire to get as many people, uh, in front of us as possible. The process for the seating, uh, as you all know as speakers, uh, we're lining you up outside the door. You will have your instructions from our chief clerk's office. And as you come into the table, uh, please find your seat and we will not be introducing you, you'll introduce yourself again for time so we can keep, uh, everyone, uh, moving through who wants to speak. You'll have three minutes to speak, uh, my clerk Neil will be keeping the time and he will also hold up a thirty second uh, green card that lets you know that you're at the thirty second mark and then when we get to the three minutes, uh, if you haven't wrapped up, I will then, uh, ask you to, uh, pause or stop and we'll go right on to the next speaker. So again, uh, we welcome you, I'm State Representative Joel Frye, I chair the Human Resources Committee and we're glad that you're all here. With that, we will begin the evening and our first presenter, uh, you are free to begin, thank you.
Good evening, uh, I would like to thank all of you for being here, I understand this is your job, but it is sometimes a thankless one. So, I do appreciate your time. My name is Jas Overland. I am the daughter of an immigrant to this great country. And I, I do truly appreciate your time tonight. I'm not here to speak to you on the viability of a baby or when life starts, although I have my opinions. Um, there are others with different degrees that can speak to that later. I'm here to speak today about you and about me. About your job, your heart, and where I believe your role is with the government. And about me and my role as a parent. I'm not gonna make any assumptions about your life or things that shaped your life, other than to say that you all have a heart that beats. And if your heart stopped beating, it would be really tough to still be you. Does it make a difference if that heart stops beating here in these walls, in your home, or within a womb? I would say that it doesn't. A beating heart is a sign of life. And with that, that life should be protected with our constitution. I'm not a history major or a lobbyist or a fighter, I'm a teacher. And with that, I've always known that I need to teach students to critically analyze what is in front of them. To hypothesize and analyze the whole truth of the matter, whatever the matter might be. Both sides of an issue, look at everything before making a decision. To deny the truth of a heartbeat is to deny a part of that equation. Personally, I have a broken heart that still does beat. There have been plenty of days that I wished it would stop, that I wished my life was over, and that hasn't happened. Uh, but today, I'm not here for my heart. I, I'm here for the heart of my unborn child. The child that I never held, whose heartbeat I never hurt. The child that I wouldn't even agree was a human until many years later. I have had an abortion and my life has changed dramatically because of it. Growing up, I was always told that pregnancy in the early stages was just a bunch of cells. As a woman and as a mother of an unborn child, I can pretty much unequivocally say that that is not true. That is wrong. I, I hurt a life, I took a life.
Thank you, that's three minutes.
My name is Leah Van den Bosch, I'm here representing myself as a woman and a resident of the state of Iowa. My abortion saved my life. I have faith in God and I was so angry at him when I found out I was pregnant, I felt like he had set me up to fail. I have struggled with my mental health for as long as I can remember. I attempted suicide when I was twelve, I've been diagnosed with an eating disorder and depression and I take medication for anxiety. If someone were to force me to carry my pregnancy to term, I would have been so desperate to escape the reality of what would become my life, I would have taken my own. Growing up in the church, I know the pro-life argument well and through my experience, I realize how flawed it is. There is no exact definition to the beginning of life in the Bible. There's a passage that continues to be overlooked and I'd like to bring that up, Exodus twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-five. "And should men quarrel and hit a pregnant woman, and she miscarries, but there is no fatality, he shall surely be punished, when the woman's husband makes demands of him, and he shall give restitution according to the judge's orders. But if there is fatality and the woman dies, then you should give the life for a life, and eye for an eye, a tooth for a tooth, a hand for a hand, a foot for a foot, a burn for a burn, a wound for a wound, and a bruise for a bruise." In those three verses, God contradicts the religious argument, she miscarries and there is no fatality. The beginning of life is a subjective, personal, religious belief that should not be mandated into state law. Open your hearts and consider what God asks you of how you treat one another. The persistent hypocrisy of the church throughout this experience astounds me. Since when do Christians get to force their beliefs on others? What gives you that authority? A politician is in no position to decide what a woman does with her unplanned pregnancy. The decision is between the woman and her God. My God brought me through my unplanned pregnancy to share my story and stories of women I've met. I know a fourteen-year-old girl who was raped by her uncle and became pregnant, and she is a resident of Iowa. This bill would force her to carry that pregnancy to term. Think about that, raped by her uncle. Representative Lynn Lundgren told me that she's pushing this bill due to personal experience. Why does your personal experience get to decide the experience of every woman in Iowa? What about my experience in which an abortion saved me from taking my life? What about my friend raped by her uncle at fourteen, does her life not matter? Personal experience is the only reason why I'm able to see the truth so clearly. Please, supporting this bill, I'm begging you to consider my perspective. You truly don't understand it until you live it and all I can do now is continue sharing the truth that I've lived. I would not be alive if I did not have this choice and that is my truth, so please, give up on my life.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, thank you for inviting me, my name is Dr. Alan Moyn and I'm the CEO of Cellular Engineering Technology and the scientific director of the John Paul II Medical Research Institute. I'm here to talk about, uh, the, address the arguments whether, whether critical medical research and life-saving, life-saving cures will be prevented uh, if the commercial, uh, practice of trafficking of aborted fetal tissue body parts is prohibited. So, the number one is the issue of, is there evidence that transplantation of, uh, aborted fetal tissue has cured disease like Parkinson's and a spinal cord injury? So, there has been clinical trials in the past several years that have failed to show that. The second is, uh, does aborted fetal tissue, uh, does that provide cures through the use of vaccines and other types of medications? That argument is conflated, um, it's conflated because those are established cell lines that were created decades ago and you do not need to have, uh, fresh fetal tissue to replenish those cell lines, those cell lines are immortal and they last forever. Next is, uh, the notion that fetal tissue is a good model for predicting human disease, that's, that's false. The fetal biology is nowhere, uh, consistent and can model, uh, human adult physiology. Lastly, there are better alternatives to fetal tissue, uh, that, that field has evolved. Uh, there are stem cells that are called induced pluripotent stem cells that have taken over the field of embryonic and fetal tissue. And so, there are much better cell lines that are now available. The other is that if you, if people really believe that fetal tissue is that important, um, there is, um, uh, fetal tissue that is available from spontaneous nears carriages. And our nonprofit has a procedure and a protocol to provide that. There has never been any demand or interest, uh, just because the science is really just not there. And we have also provided, uh, this, uh, type of, uh, tissue, if available, at no profit to anybody who would want it. So, in conclusion, there is no evidence that, uh, aborted fetal tissue is going to provide cures and is gonna prevent life-saving, uh, treatments for patients.
Good evening, thank you for your attention, my name is Renee Kramer. I'm here as a private citizen, but I'm a professor of constitutional law at a PhD in political science with an expertise in women's reproductive law and politics. I'm here tonight because the six-week ban, as proposed, certainly will be litigated in a costly and lengthy process and the state of Iowa would certainly lose that litigation. The six-week ban does not stand up to constitutional scrutiny for three reasons. First, it places an undue burden on women seeking to access the right to abortion, that undue burden is unconstitutional under Roe, under Casey and under Whole Women's Health. Second, it does not meet the compelling state interest test as articulated in those cases. And third, it is not the least restrictive nor most effective way to achieve a legitimate state goal of reducing the numbers of abortion in the state. First, the undue burden on women is clear. Many women are not aware that they are pregnant prior to six weeks. To ask them to decide to terminate a pregnancy of which they have no knowledge is an undue burden. Most abortions, ninety percent of abortions in the United States, take place within the first twelve weeks of pregnancy. These abortions between six and twelve weeks then would impact, a ban between six and twelve weeks would impact a significant number of women in the state of Iowa. Unduly. Third, second, the lack of a compelling state interest that passes constitutional muster is also clear. If the state wants to limit abortion in the first trimester, it must do so for a compelling reason. And as articulated in Whole Women's Health, that reason must be on behalf of the women or, of women or public health. It cannot be, as articulated in Whole Women's Health, on behalf of the fetus or a state interest in morality. The six-week ban does not provide a health benefit for women seeking to terminate a pregnancy. Abortion in the first twelve weeks is overwhelmingly safe. Abortion that is restricted is unsafe. Affecting a six-week ban does not reduce or limit the number of abortions in the state, it simply reduces or limits their safety. Research has shown quite definitively that the presence of strict anti-abortion regulation coincides with declines in women's health overall, declines in women's reproductive health specifically, and increases in infant and female mortality more generally. Finally, there are less restrictive ways to achieve the legitimate state end of lowering the rates of abortion in the state. Simply reduce the number of unintended pregnancies. How do we do that? Three ways. Number one, science-based sex ed that has non-judgmental discussion of consent and the non-judgmental provision of birth control. Those things actually reduce unintended pregnancies. Second, um, research shows that access to birth control will help women avoid unwanted pregnancies, thirty percent of which will be aborted.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You bet.
Hi, I'm Dr. Bill Arthur Holt from Red Oak, Iowa, and I am privileged to come and share with you my journey of an abortion provider to life. I was humbled and honored to finish at the top of my osteopathic medical school class here in Des Moines in nineteen seventy-two. And from there, I went to Wichita, Kansas for my family practice residency. It was then, in January nineteen seventy-three, that Roe versus Wade, United States Supreme Court legalized abortion. Both, uh, in the medical center and at Planned Parenthood, the family practice residents were instructed on how to do abortions. I became proficient at that procedure. The first abortion that I did was on a twelve-year-old that was raped by her twenty-eight-year-old uncle. And I thought to myself, yeah, this abortion is a good thing. Then, I did several abortions on women of all ages who aborted their babies, really for birth control. Too many women had multiple abortions. I had some problem justifying that, these abortions in my own mind, but I thought to myself, who am I to judge? It took several years after Roe versus Wade before substantial opposition to abortion occurred in the country as people started to understand what was really happening with the procedure. I became an apologist, arguing for the abortion, abortion industry with many people and eventually with God. And I had that discussion with God for about a year or two. Finally, God impressed upon me that he didn't, that I didn't need to be convinced for or against abortion. He just did not want me to do them. He didn't try to talk me out in the arguments for abortion. There was really no condemnation from the Lord, it was just that he wanted me to stop doing abortions. Comedian Willie Tomlin of the old Laughing Program used to say, "Why is it that when we speak to God, it's called praying, but when God speaks to us, it's called schizophrenia?" Well, I haven't shown other signs of being crazy yet and so I think that God was speaking to me. And it was not until I obeyed God that I started to understand the other side, the life arguments. And that I had been so against, in the pregnant woman, there's actually two heartbeats, two lives, two people. Who are we to judge that one of those two lives is more important than the other one and choose to kill one of those two lives because of the convenience of the other?
Your time is up.
Good evening, I'm Amy Binghamman and I am an obstetrician-gynecologist in our community. I love the United States of America. I was pregnant at sixteen, I dropped out of high school. I lived in the Peabody Projects in St. Louis and I gave birth to my now twenty-six-year-old son at Regional Medical Center in St. Louis. Known for delivering babies and treating gunshot wounds. And yet, here I am, a former lieutenant commander of the United States Navy and a practicing physician within your community. I do not have political aspirations. I would much rather be watching my seven-year-old dance class right now, or watching my nine-year-old play roller hockey, or even argue with my eleven-year-old how we should be reading instead of playing the Xbox. However, this is where I need to be. I am fighting for my patients, your wives, your sisters, your children, for our present and for our future. I am fighting political influence into the practice of medicine. In the United States, half of our pregnancies are unintended. Safe, legal abortion is a necessary component of women's healthcare. I implore you not to pass this bill. I would like to give you examples that I've witnessed to highlight this bill's dangerous potential. A married woman with three young children visiting her physician and learning that she is newly pregnant at the same time she is diagnosed with a highly aggressive cancer. Abortion is recommended to preserve her health and ultimately may save her life. A thirteen-year-old who was raped, her recovery from this event is challenging enough without compounding of forced pregnancy and delivery. Abortion must be an option for these young victimized women. A woman with kidney disease in an unplanned pregnancy which will strain her kidneys to the point of dialysis. Abortion must be an option to preserve her health. A couple who is overjoyed with the thoughts of starting a family only to learn in eleven weeks that their fetus has a chromosomal abnormality incompatible with life. This family deserves the right to choose whether to terminate or carry this pregnancy. An agonizing decision which may be, may between this family and their physician. I could speak on many more I've seen, maternal cardiac disease, incest, victims of domestic violence, women exposed to teratogenic medications with an unintended pregnancy, birth control failures in responsible couples. But there are many more voices to be heard this evening. As I was preparing to speak tonight, I couldn't help remember that Roe versus Wade occurred in nineteen seventy-three. I was born in nineteen seventy-four. Do not pass a bill in my lifetime to negate a woman's reproductive rights. Thank you for your time and may our voices be heard. Please remember these patient examples I provided you when the burden of the vote comes before you. Vote no and allow me to continue to care for women in the way that they deserve.
Thank you.
My name is Tom DeLay, I was the majority leader in the United States Congress. Uh, was in leadership for, uh, almost fifteen years. And I really appreciate you allowing me to come and testify because I have taken a leadership role over the last year to two years uh, to, uh, to see that these heartbeat bills are introduced and they've been introduced in seventeen states uh, and passed, they passed in three states, unfortunately, John Casey, uh, heartlessly vetoed the bill in Ohio. But there's gonna be many more states after this next election to enter these heartbeat bills. And I am very proud of Iowa taking the lead, uh, on passing a heartbeat bill because it is time. Ladies and gentlemen, it's been forty-five years, sixty million babies have died. And some people are proud of the fact that they're claiming success because they've got abortions down to a million a year. Something has to change. You notice everybody that I've heard testify so far never talk about the baby. They always talk about the women. And I understand and have compassion for those women, but they never talk about the baby. What about the baby? Uh, the American people are ready for the heartbeat bill. Uh, then, we did a Barner poll a little over, a little less than a year ago. Seven out of ten Americans support the heartbeat process. Uh, eighty-six percent Republicans supported, get this one, fifty-five percent of Democrats supported, and sixty-one percent of independents supported. People are waking up to what is going on, why? Because they could see the baby on a sonogram. Uh, they could see a, a, just weeks after conception baby that is perfectly formed. It's not a piece of flesh, it's not a bug, it's not a parasite, it's a, it's a little a piece of flesh, it's not a bug, it's not a parasite, it's a little baby with little bitty feet. And now, we can hear their heartbeat within six to eight weeks. You know, the heartbeat bill, the heartbeat is the most recognized indicator of life. What happens in an accident? The first thing they do is take your pulse to see if you're alive. What happens, what they're always asking, is their heart still beating? We don't go to funerals for people that has heart beating. Why? Because it's a universally recognized marker that it is life, and it deserves to be respected and protected, because if you, in this bill, as well as many around the country, and in Congress, and by the way, we have the most cosponsors in the House represented than any other bill in the House.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
My name is Susanna Tabaka, and I am the president and CEO of Planned Parenthood of the Heartland and Planned Parenthood Voters of Iowa. I feel that it's ironic that I am testifying here against this bill today during Women's History Month, and yes, I am here to talk about the women. It is ironic that I'm here, because when we should be celebrating women's achievements and how far we've come as a state, instead, we are once again being forced to plead for women's basic reproductive rights. How insulting to the women of Iowa who remember what life was like before Roe versus Wade. Before Roe versus Wade, one in six deaths related to pregnancy or childbirth was the result of an illegal abortion. Today, we've come so far that abortion is one of the safest medical procedures in the U.S., and yet, this care and these women, the safety of these women, is still up for debate. I know many will argue here today for this bill using some sort of religious doctrine, but before Roe, it was actually the clergy who often connected women with the safest resources available to end a pregnancy. From 1969 to 72, for example, the clergy consultation service referred over twenty-five-hundred women from Iowa out of state where abortion was legal. And as you might imagine, most of those people who were able to travel were white and middle class with the resources to travel. But what about the rest of those Iowans? What about the ones who could not afford to go out of state? Plenty of Iowans can tell you, and in my role, plenty of women tell me. I heard a story from an elderly woman in Sioux City who told me about her mother, who lived in poverty and attempted a self-induced abortion during her eleventh pregnancy. She died orphaning her ten children. What about those women? What about those children? A retired physician from eastern Iowa told me about a young woman he tried to save when she had inserted a kerosene-inserted rag into her vagina in an attempt to end her pregnancy. She died in front of him. What about women like that? A dear friend of mine, now in her eighties, told me about her own illegal abortion here in Des Moines. She almost died, she lived to tell the tale, but the procedure was dangerous because she did not have a trained provider. This does not have to be. This is the reality of this disastrous bill. If you advance this legislation, Iowa will be dragged back into the back alley days of pro or prior to Roe v. Wade, back to women needlessly dying just trying to have some control
Thank you for your time.
...over their bodies, lives, and futures. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Good evening, committee members. My name is Jennifer Christie-Brierling. Four years ago, I was brutally attacked at hotel room, beaten, tortured, and raped, my body thrown in the stairwell. I'm not here tonight to represent crime victims. I'm here tonight to represent the thirty-two thousand women here who become pregnant after rape, and the seventy-five percent of us who give our children life. I'm part of a global organization called Save the One. Save the One is mothers from rape, children, adult children who are conceived in rape. And it's this people group who I'm talking about, the conceived in rape who are targeted, it seems, for eradication. This doesn't make sense to me, because the Supreme Court has already decided that to, for a rapist to be punished with death is considered cruel and unusual punishment. And yet, somehow, somehow, we are okay with killing the children, who were not even in existence at the time the crime was committed. I'm here tonight to bear witness to the lies that I heard and the lies that I was told, that if you just abort, everything will be okay, you'll forget. If you just abort, then you can move on. There's no forgetting. No woman is ever going to forget what happened to her. I've been told so many times that if you just had an abortion, you won't always have this reminder hanging over your head, this reminder. Is my son a reminder? He absolutely is. My son is a reminder every day that as women, we can rise above our circumstances. My son is a reminder that love is always stronger than hate, and that who we are as human beings is not determined by how we were conceived. A woman at her most broken needs hope, and help, and love, and people rallying around her. She does not need violence on top of violence, tragedy on top of tragedy. I'm here tonight, one woman, but I speak for most of us when I say, stop calling my son a rapist child. Stop calling him evil seed and child of the devil. He is my son, and he has a right to be here. Do not use me and my rape and my story, and the story of all of us mothers from rape who love our children as a banner, as a banner to hide behind and excuse the genocide of the innocent. We love our children. The first time I saw my son's heartbeat was on an ultrasound. It's the same heartbeat that beats in his three-year-old body today. He is an exceptional child, but he is not an exception. I beg you to think of this. The heart that beats in my son, the heart that beat in him at four weeks is the heart that beats in him at three, is the heart that will beat in him at thirty. It loves, and it hurts, and it feels just like mine and just like yours. I beg you not to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Amanda Acton. You know, I heard it said previously that nobody here in opposition to this bill will speak about the children or their children. I'm going to talk about my child. I'm going to tell you that I found out my child had a fetal anomaly. She was going to die in horrible anguish if she were born. And I'll tell you, I never thought that I was going to be in the position of making that choice. I never thought I would be somebody who had abortion. But I'll tell you, when I heard what would happen to her, I knew in my heart immediately what the right thing to do for her was. She had a heartbeat. I saw it, I heard it. I felt her move. I felt her kick. I felt her up until the very day that she died. And she died because I chose to terminate the pregnancy. And when I made that decision, I talked to my husband, and we decided that that was the best decision for our family. I consulted my faith, and I decided with the consultation of my faith that this was the most compassionate choice for my child. I talked to my doctors, I consulted them, and they decided it was the safest option for me. You know who I didn't talk to? My representative at the time, Jo Olton. I didn't give her a call and say, hey, what do you think? Should I abort my baby? I didn't ask her, is my child's heartbeat valuable to you? I didn't ask her what I should do, because it's not her business. I do not doubt that the people speaking here today come with deeply, deeply held beliefs about abortion. Those beliefs that they came to through prayer, through meditation, through study, but I'm saying that those deeply held beliefs do not trump mine. I have just as strong deeply held beliefs that what I did for my child was correct, and it was right, and I do not want the legislature to take that option away. That option was what made me lucky in my situation. And so I ask you, as this moves forward, to consider that you are not the decider in these situations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Tamara Scott. Thank you all for being here and thank you for serving. This is a very emotionally charged issue, tensions run high, and they should. You are determining life and death for millions whom you have never met. They'll likely be not a more important vote that you'll ever take, not just in your legislative career, but in your life. No one should have the ability to choose life or death for another at a whim or rational logic. I often meet with the gentleman who was elderly, and at age thirteen, he stood face-to-face with Dr. Joseph Minglea at Doc O'Concentration Camp. Had Dr. Minglea pointed to the right rather than the left, I'd never meet my friend. We'd never benefit from the pharmacies, the medical professions, and the health field of his sons. His whole family would have been wiped out on a whim at the choosing of another. I get the opportunity to interview individuals on the radio. Krista Hopperberg was conceived in an incest when her maternal grandfather raped her mother. Four more babies were aborted, allowing the crime to be concealed and covered up and continue. Judah Meyer conceived in a gang rape when her mother was raped violently beaten by eight men. Eight men, and yet she chose life for her daughter. They were reunited decades later. Both Judah and Krista are so grateful that they were not given the death sentence for the crimes of their father. We've heard all kinds of reasons. We've heard scare tactics. I ask you, in the travesty of incest, the violence of rape, if the Creator mentioned in our declaration offers and deems a life should come forward, who are we to say he We've heard about faulty ultrasound equipment, that it may not detect a heartbeat at the same time. If it's faulty, it likely won't detect a heartbeat that's not there. But where there is a heartbeat, shouldn't we err on the side of life? It's what we want the emergency room doctors to do. We've heard about the Board of Regents opposing this, and yet, they have said, if you insert the language that the University of Iowa will teach to accreditation standards, they will be neutral and no longer oppose. This is incredibly important. This is more than not finishing a school semester, this is not financial difficulties, this is not a career path unplanned, this is not ideology, this is biology, a beating heart, and for every life conceived, there is a plan and a purpose that me, we, may one day benefit from if we don't allow that life to be snuffed out. Ladies and gentlemen, it is in your hands, and I beg you with the same liberty that many slaves were given in a vote, use your vote to free the millions of Iowans that are looking to you for their first breath. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Sikulka. I have been a church pastor for over thirty years, and I currently serve a church in Urbandale. I also serve in volunteer capacity as Chair of the Board of Directors of the Interfaith Alliance of Iowa, which opposes this bill. This legislation is not good for the people of Iowa, because it is based on false premises, false promises, and false pretenses. The false premise is the notion that a beating heart means life, and the absence of a beating heart means the absence of life. This is overly simplistic and does not match our human experience or our values as human beings. For twenty years, I was a volunteer firefighter and first responder, and during that time, I witnessed numerous cases where a heart had stopped, but we did not accept that as definitive of the absence of life. Sadly, there were also times when the heart was still beating, but it was very clear that life was absent. I have sat with families and intensive care units agonizing over what to do when someone they loved was dying. They did not consider the heartbeat alone. Neurological indicators, brain activity, and the wishes of the individual all played a part, and the family decided. In one case, a spouse made the agonizing choice to remove a ventilator, understanding that the person they deeply loved was no longer there. Contrary to all expectations, the heart kept beating and beating and beating. And then someone remembered that the patient had a pacemaker. In disconnecting the machines that were sustaining body functions, that had been overlooked. Because it had not been disabled when the other machines were removed, no one was quite sure what to do. The protocols did not address this. I cannot believe that because the heart was beating, that person was still alive, still there. The human body is a wondrously complex assembly of organs and systems that work together to sustain us. To reduce life to any one organ or system is to rob us of our humanity and our individuality of thought and emotions, which are really what define us as alive. Life is more than just a heartbeat. The false promise is that with the passage of this legislation, abortions will be prevented. Maybe some will, but nobody has a crystal ball to see what the future holds. We do have the next best thing, though, and that is a history and a time in which abortions were illegal. It was not the utopia we are being promised. People had sex, and unplanned and unwanted pregnancies occurred. Women died at the hands of others who were willing to provide them with abortion services. Several weeks ago, an elderly woman approached me after worship and said to me, Pastor, I am not in favor of abortion, but I do not want to go back to the way things were before Roe versus Wade. She remembers, and she does not want this bill. The false pretense is that as legislation, you are attempting to circumvent the Constitution and abrogate for yourselves powers that do not belong to you. The bill ignores the rulings of the judicial branch and makes the body in this room the sole arbitraries of right and privilege of citizens. This legislation will be challenged.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Martin Cannon. I'm an attorney with the Thomas More Society. The Thomas More Society is a public interest law firm dedicated to defending life and religious liberty. I'd like to address three things with you this evening. First, you may be aware that I have committed, the Thomas More Society, to defend this case if a challenge arises, defend this bill on behalf of the state of Iowa. That's important, because the Thomas More Society has litigated cases about abortion, about religious liberty, all over this country, including every level of courts, including the Supreme Court, for the last twenty-five years. Our capacity to do so and do it well cannot be reasonably questioned. You have a similar commitment from Liberty Counsel. That's also valuable. For the better part of the last nine months, I've spent defending people accused in federal court by the Attorney General of the State of New York. It's been a very significant case, culminating recently in a three-week federal trial. And during that trial, the Liberty Counsel guys were part of our team. They are very fine lawyers. The ability of the Thomas More Society, or Liberty Counsel, especially the two of them together, to defend this bill cannot be reasonably questioned. Secondly, you will hear that the bill is in conflict with Roe, that it cannot stand unless Roe is modified or reversed, and that is largely true. But modifications and reversals are what our system lives and breathes on. Some of the most important cases in the history of our country have been modifications or reversals of previously important cases. But those modifications do not happen generally unless some legislature passes a bill because it matters and despite the idea that it might get challenged. So the question really here is, is such a thing sensible in this case? And there are two answers to that. The first is to address the defects in Roe. They are plain on the face of the opinion, they are widely acknowledged by people on both sides of the thing. The majority in Roe thought they were wise enough to solve a problem that wasn't theirs to solve, and they broke all the rules of jurisprudence in order to do it, because they thought it would end the matter. It did not end the matter. The second thing is that the A Circuit Court of Appeals, which is the highest federal court affecting this state, second only to the Supreme Court, has commented extensively on two things: the fact that the Supreme Court today is interested or amenable to reviewing and reconsidering Roe, and has commented extensively on all the reasons Roe should be reconsidered.
Good evening. My name is Mary Grace Elson. I live in Iowa City. I am the Obstetrics and Gynecology Residency Program Director at University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you regarding the potential impact of amended SF 359 on the residency program in Obstetrics and Gynecology at the University of Iowa. There is only one OB-GYN residency in our state, and we graduate five residents per year. Approximately one-third of these graduates remain in Iowa to practice. Not everyone is familiar with the training requirements to practice medicine: completion of a bachelor's degree plus four years of medical school, followed by years of residency in a specialty. of residency in a specialty. Residencies are accredited by the Accreditation Council for Graduate Medical Education, or the ACGME. The program requirements for an obstetrics and gynecology program include: Programs must provide training or access to training in the provision of abortion, and this must be part of the planned curriculum; and residents must have experience in managing complications of abortion. If a program does not meet a requirement, it gets a citation. If the shortcomings not corrected, eventually there's a warning, and then probation, and ultimately loss of accreditation. Any individual resident may opt out of abortion training. However, the program must provide abortion training. SF 359 would essentially ban all abortion in the state of Iowa, so our OB-GYN residency would need to look out of state to identify and contract with an entity where our residents could obtain the required abortion training, most likely at significant state expense. Accreditation worries for the OB-GYN residency would have a snowball effect. The reputation of the program and the department is hurt, affecting the quality of applicants for residency and faculty positions and faculty retention. Four sub-specialty fellowships in OB-GYN depend on accreditation of the core residency, as does the neonatology fellowship in the Children's Hospital. Those are the doctors who take care of preemies. Iowa medical students choosing OB-GYN may preferentially leave the state for residency and practice. SF 359 will potentially diminish the health care available for women, girls, and babies for our entire state. I have practiced medicine for thirty years. I have been with my patient, who just learned that her much-wanted baby had no brain, confronted with a choice between terrible and awful. Regardless of her choice, she deserves safe care at the hands of a well-trained physician. There is no place for a legislator in the exam with my patient and me dictating what I may say to my patient or telling me that I must do things that are not medically indicated. SF 359 is bad medicine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue. My name is Dr. Kathy Altman. I'm a retired OB-GYN of thirty-five years, and I am speaking on behalf of the Charlotte Rose Institute and myself. When I entered medical school, I believed that the availability of abortion on demand was solely an issue of women's rights. I felt no more compassion for the fetus than I did for the chick embryos that I dissected in college. I continued to do abortions without reservation even while pregnant, but after my delivery, I made the connection between fetus and baby. The fact that the baby was unwanted was no longer enough justification for me to kill it, and I could no longer do abortions. My views also changed during my practice as I saw young women who did amazingly well after deciding to keep their unplanned pregnancies, in contrast to those who were struggling with the emotional and physical aftermath of abortion. That wasn't what I was expecting and wasn't consistent with my feminist ideology. I don't believe a woman can remain unscathed after killing her child. At some point, usually after childbirth or the inability to get pregnant, the realization of what she did hits her. It wasn't until after my first child that I regretted my own abortion. I wish that there had been a heartbeat bill back then, or that it had not been so terribly easy to get an abortion. We have convinced our young women that an unplanned pregnancy is the worst thing that can happen to them, and that their right to reproductive freedom is more important than their baby's right to life. Because we can't see who they will become, we feel justified in sacrificing babies in the womb for the convenience of the people we can see. I love to meet adults that I delivered, but it's always bittersweet because I am reminded of all the people I will never meet because I aborted them. It also reminds me that I am a mass murderer. I support the Heartbeat Protection Act because it uses the heartbeat, a very concrete sign of life that people can identify with, to define when a fetus should be protected. It will protect the lives of those who won't continue to be if we do nothing. They won't be here to cure cancer, to write a beautiful symphony, or to wipe a child's tears. One just has to look at the almost-weren't, whose mothers chose not to abort them, to get a glimmer of who they might become and how they might benefit society. I think about my beautiful cousin, whose Bangladeshi mother was raped by a Pakistani soldier. She survived her mother's abortion, was rescued by Mother Teresa's nuns, and was adopted by my Aunt Nahu. Perhaps we should ask those who were conceived through rape if others like them should be denied protection under the Act. We know from a scientific standpoint that the baby in the womb is a human being...
Thank you.
My name is Emily Babers. My name is Emily Babers, and I am speaking as an M4 from the University of Iowa Carver College of Medicine. I am also a born and raised Iowan from Breamer County, a farm girl, and an advocate for women's right to make their own health care choices. I chose to enter the field of obstetrics and gynecology because I'm passionate about primary care for women, and the opportunity through great care for women to positively affect the health of babies and young families. I oppose this legislation because it will make that more difficult, and it will severely impact Iowa women's ability to have healthy families. Iowa is already a place of physician shortage, particularly in obstetrics. Legislation like this makes Iowa an unappealing place to practice because abortion is occasionally part of safe, necessary care for patients. Patients with pregnancies affected by fatal genetic or anatomic abnormalities are not just risking their own life by carrying to term. They also risk the well-being of their families and their ability to carry future children. Limiting an OB-GYN's ability to provide abortion also jeopardizes the accreditation of the only OB-GYN training program in the state of Iowa. Having OB-GYNs in practice means healthy women and babies, means children for our schools, means young adults for our colleges and workforce, and tax dollars for our state. I urge you to use a long lens here and consider the other human impacts of this bill. My patients deserve access to contraception. They deserve early and thorough sex education, and as a provider, I'm committed to giving them that. But I also am committed to providing abortion when these initiatives fail or when proper development isn't taking place. Despite our desire to minimize the frequency of abortion through prevention and education, it remains part of a full spectrum of choices that are guaranteed to women in our constitutional rights. I will continue my training in this this summer in obstetrics and gynecology, but I have always envisioned a future practicing in Iowa. I want to provide a full spectrum of obstetrical care for Iowa's women. I respect your position as legislators, and I ask you to spend Iowans' time and resources helping men and women make the decision for the right time for children, and making Iowa a great place to eventually raise them. Iowans want to see representatives focusing on improving what our state offers, not decreasing women's health care access.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kevin Philcolli, a clinical psychologist here in Des Moines, Iowa. And the claim that abortion does not hurt women is simply false. But I understand what the claim is made and why some might testify to its validity. After all, the American Psychological Association said the following in 2008, "There is no credible evidence that a single elective abortion of an unwanted child in and of itself causes mental health problems for adult women." But I hope that we can come to understand what the APA is implicitly saying when we ship away its nuanced language. It will be important to do so since the first meta-analysis on the link between mental health and abortion was published in 2011, contradicting the APA's 2008 claim. The authors combined the results of twenty-two studies from 1995 to 2009, which included roughly nine hundred thousand women from six different countries. The study showed the following. Women with a history of abortion face a statistically significant higher risk of subsequent mental health problems, including suicidal behavior, substance abuse, anxiety, and depression. Fifty-nine percent are at higher risk compared to women without a history of abortion, and fifty-five percent are at higher risk compared to women who gave birth to an unplanned pregnancy. So what is the APA saying, then, when using this nuanced language? I find four qualifiers suspicious. First, they say there is no credible evidence. Simply means that there is evidence, but in their judgment, question credibility due to weakness in methodology. But every study has weaknesses in methodology. That's why different sections of research papers say limitations to the study. Second, they say is a single abortion. They use this language because they know there is credible evidence that women with a history of multiple abortions, which accounts for fifty percent of abortions, is associated with subsequent risk. Third, they make the claim unwanted, but in most cases, the child is wanted at times is coerced to abortion due to financial restrictions or unsupport from the father or family members. Then fourth, make the claim adult women, because there is evidence that minors have more subsequent mental health problems following abortion, which accounts for fifteen to thirty percent of abortion. It's important that we be as objective as possible in examining the research and leave our biases, either they be religious or political biases, behind. A great example of this is Professor David Ferguson. And he said the following when commenting on a 2006 study that was published in the Journal of Child Psychology and Psychiatry, finding that women who had undergone abortion were two times more likely to develop major depression, anxiety, substance abuse, and suicidal behaviors compared to women who had never been pregnant, and are thirty-five percent higher than women who carried them to term. And Professor Ferguson quotes, "I remain pro-choice. I am not religious. I am an atheist and a rationalist. The findings surprised me, but the results appear to be very robust because they persist across a series of disorders and a series of ages. Abortion is a traumatic life event. That is, it involves loss, it involves grief, it involves difficulties, and the trauma may in fact predispose people to having mental illness." And I encourage you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nicole Westergaard, and I'm a native Iowan, a former page that used to work for several of these committee members, and now a third-year medical student at the Carver College of Medicine. With the utmost respect, I am here to speak in opposition of Senate File 359. The bill in question is currently amended to add the fetal heartbeat amendment that was previously seen on the Senate floor as Senate File 2281, and it's this amendment that I am directing my comments. I've spoken with several members of the legislature over the past few weeks, and it was dismayed to learn that the detrimental effects of the legislation on medical education and the provision of medical services were never fully discussed prior to the vote of SF 2281. According to the Council for Graduate Medical Education accreditation standards, the obstetrics and gynecology residency programs must offer family planning training, including contraception and training in the provision of abortion. The bill's significant limitations on abortions would put our residency program in danger of failing accreditation. Senate File 359 is amended and dangers not only the obstetrics and gynecology program, but as well, also, as well endangers our maternal fetal medicine, gynecological oncology, reproductive endocrinology and fertility, the female pelvic medicine reconstructive surgery, and the neonatal programs. The elimination of our medical training program dangers the training of residency physicians and medical students alike. Most importantly, the bill hurts the health of our patients, the patients of Iowa. Actions have consequences. The consequences of this Senate file is fewer safe options for women, fewer physicians for neonates, and high-risk pregnancies that do not have physicians that can adequately train to prepare for the birth of those neonates. Our Iowan patients deserve our very best level of care. Doing so requires an obstetrics and gynecology residency and contingent fellowships programs in cases where pregnancies are high-risk. I respect the diverse individual beliefs of the moral and ethical considerations present in this room and in the rotunda. However, good intentions do not make the long-term consequences disappear. You cannot wait and see how it will play out for our medical training. You have several experts in the field that have spoken today and are telling you that the intent and the reality of this bill are not the same. The reality is that this bill directly jeopardizes the lives of pregnant women and neonates alike by eliminating the training that is quintessential to their medical care, starting with impeding the training of medical students to recruiting obstetrics and gynecologists. You cannot stand for the lives of the unborn when you do not stand for the lives of those already born. With your support, we hope that you will oppose Senate File that is currently proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Kimberly Lawrie. I'm the Director of Life Ministries for Lutheran Family Service. I direct a statewide adoption agency and pregnancy counseling program, and I would like to address the following question. Does Iowa have the adoption infrastructure to handle the number of children born to women who would have otherwise sought abortion if it were not for a law prohibiting them from doing so? The National Council for Adoption has compiled data surrounding adoption and abortion. There is a national adoption rate of seven babies to every one thousand babies aborted or born to unwed mothers in the United States. This is called the Adoption Option Index. The National Council for Adoption broke out their numbers even further and reported on the Adoption Option Index state by state. This data can be found at the Adoption By The Numbers, which is written by Dr. Joe Jones and Dr. Paul Plecheck. There were some very interesting findings, important enough that I would like to quote the National Council for Adoption about those findings, and here's what they had to say. Quote, "In 2014, four states had adoption option indexes three or more times higher than the national average: Utah, Arkansas, Montana, and Iowa. There were two to four adoptions for every one hundred abortions plus births to unmarried women in those states. This suggests that in these states, women may have more extensive counseling, services, and facilities to orient pregnant women towards adoption, among other factors." End quote. That's great news. Iowa's Adoption Option Index appears to show that we currently have an infrastructure that helps us succeed in guiding women towards an adoption option at least three to four times higher than the national average. It is not realistic to believe that all extra births in Iowa would be placed for adoption, but using that current Adoption Option Index, it would indicate that somewhere around an additional sixty children would be placed for adoption annually, should this law be adopted. There are multiple adoption agencies throughout Iowa besides Lutheran Family Service who could easily absorb that additional sixty placements. The Iowa Adoption Agency Association, a professional group of private adoption agencies, lists eight licensed agencies who could provide private placement services, and they're located throughout the entire state, some with multiple locations like Lutheran Family Service. Some of the extra babies born in Iowa, if this legislation were adopted, will be parented and may rely on welfare or other state aid. According to 2015 Bio-Statistics of Iowa report, fifty-eight percent of the Iowa women seeking abortions have some college education, and in my opinion, that makes them less likely to need welfare assistance throughout their lifetime, so that's also good news. It will remain to be seen the impact this bill will have on our infrastructures, welfare, Medicaid, and adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gucci Brown-Watt, and I'm here as a citizen of Iowa, as a woman, as a woman who has experienced rape, pregnancy, giving birth to my son, and touching, and I would never sell up my oldest son for anything, but at the same time, I also experience domestic violence, rape, pregnancy, and abortion. Why? Because if I had not aborted that pregnancy, I would have died. Now, you have all heard all of the personal stories, you have heard the numbers, you have heard the statistics, and they mean nothing. However, I have a few points to make, battles that my strong suit, suit, my, my, this really, for, for this. One, this country is an amazing country, and it was founded by people who believed strongly we needed to have a separation between the church and the state. That separation needs to remain. This bill interferes with that separation. Two, we got, we got, two. Two, I know many people who are pro, pro-choice, many. Do you know what? Not one of those people is pro-abortion, not one. So is the difference between being pro-abortion, being pro-choice, just as there is the difference between being pro-life and pro-good? We are not pro-abortion. I am not in favor of abortion. I am in favor of women having the right to make their own decision. I question why so, so much discussion about keeping the government, small, keeping the government within limits, but when it comes to women's rights, that goes out the window, it's gone. That makes me wonder, what's going on? When a woman finds... When a woman finds herself pregnant, you watch many things go through her mind, some of the positive, some of the not. Any woman who makes the decision to abort, that makes that just for the reading, for some ridiculous reason, it is a deep, dark decision. But that is a decision that women have the right to make, that you as legislators do not have the right to make, bro. And I'm, believe it or not, I'm done. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Thayer. For nearly 18 years, I worked for Planned Parenthood as a center manager in Strong Lake. I'm speaking tonight in support of the Heartbeat Bill. During my job interview, I was asked what my thoughts were about Planned Parenthood's surgical services. Having already experienced the miracle of birth and pregnancy, I felt that abortion is wrong and shared my thoughts with the regional director who interviewed me. She countered that Planned Parenthood believes abortion is not murder as long as the fetus is not viable. I disagreed with that philosophy, but was still awkward at the physician and began my duties immediately. While the two centers that I manage were family planning only, it was required that all clinic managers observe in the abortion unit. The first day I worked in Des Moines, I watched about 35 to 40 abortions, including at least one set of twins. At this time, ultrasounds were not routinely done, so the length of gestation could be quite a surprise. Clients knew their cost would increase with each passing week, so they would not always be honest about their dates. This would result in sometimes challenging abortions of babies who were much older than we expected. Filling in at one of the abortion facilities was difficult for me, as I continued to believe that unborn babies are alive. With ultrasound becoming more widely used, it was obvious that a fetus was alive and moving right up until the procedure. The process of abortion included the sound of the suction machine, the sight of the torn bodies in the little glass bowl, the many empty faces of the moms, and it always ended in the death of a baby. A heart in heart is a necessity to work in the abortion industry. I have one, and it seems so to those who work daily in the unit. To do abortions consistently, one has to tell themselves that they are doing a good work, that somehow the death of the baby helps the mother, all while ignoring the dismembered limbs and tiny body parts of the baby. When a patient is in the end stages of life, medical staff will use a stethoscope to determine a heartbeat. At the point they hear none, they declare the patient deceased. But as long as there is a heartbeat, the very symbol of life, the patient is considered alive. Common sense would dictate the same for all life, including unborn babies. I'm now the Director of a Pro-Life Pregnancy Center and work to save babies from abortion. Our local churches recently gifted our ministry with a wonderful new state-of-the-art ultrasound machine. We can see an unborn baby not much bigger than a grain of rice with a beating heart. Over the many years of doing pregnancy tests, I've heard every reason why a woman feels compelled to have an abortion. I do understand and have compassion for those who are pregnant and desperately do not want to deliver a baby, but I also have a very clear vision of what abortion at any stage is: murder, the end of the life. That's why I encourage you to support the Heartbeat Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Connie Ryan. I'm the Executive Director of Interfaith Alliance of Iowa and Action Fund. And on last Wednesday, we put out a call to clergy across the state to sign a letter against this legislation and in support of a woman's right to make her own healthcare decisions. 67 other faith leaders signed that letter. It was published online with the Des Moines Register on Thursday, and it was in print on Sunday. I am going to read that letter to you from those clergy. As faith leaders, we want to use our collective voices to stand with Iowa women in support of their constitutional right to make independent healthcare decisions, including the right to an abortion. It is not the role of the government to infringe upon a woman's right to make private medical decisions. Most Iowans, people of faith and no faith, believe in and are standing with every woman's right to be in control of their bodies and the healthcare decisions that impact their lives. We stand with Iowa women too. The constitutional right of women to make their own healthcare decisions is being attacked by some in the Iowa Legislature, with arguments based only in religious beliefs. It will create harm to Iowa women and a woman's right to make her own medical decisions. It is creating a clear path for the government to intrude in the most personal rights and decisions of Iowa women. This is unconstitutional and it is wrong. There is a broad spectrum of beliefs within the faith community regarding the beginning of life. We do not wish to debate that issue because quite simply, our personal religious beliefs are not relevant to the legal debate. Our personal religious beliefs should not be the driver of public policy. What is relevant is our respect for Iowa women and their constitutional right to privacy in making their own medical decisions. Another person's theological understanding of when life begins cannot trump the rights of women. We know that women do not want to be in the place to need an abortion. Life is not perfect, and there are personal, often difficult reasons that women make a decision to end a pregnancy. The reasons are as varied as the women themselves. Unless we are invited into that conversation with a woman, it is not our business, and it is not the business of government. Every person has the right to their own personal and religious beliefs and to live their life how they determine is best for them. The government does not have the right to infringe on the freedoms or privacy of Iowa women based on those rights. Every woman deserves to consult her values, her faith, her doctor, when making a decision about her body and her pregnancy. We stand with the women of Iowa. Thank you.
Hello. I am here as a woman whose life has been devastated by abortion. I was a teenager when I had my first abortion. At the abortion facility, I was told that it was not a baby, that it was just a pump of cells and tissue, that the procedure would be easy, it would be safe, even safer than carrying to term. I was a scared teenager. These were adults. These were the medical professionals, so I listened to what they had to say. Alone, I lay on that cold table, waiting for a doctor that I had never met before to perform a surgical abortion that my parents didn't even know I was there for. On the drive home, I was bleeding profusely and the pain was incredible. So when I arrived, I called the abortion facility back, and I told them of my dilemma. Their solution was, "I'm sorry, you're not a problem anymore. You will have to call your own doctor or go to a hospital." There was no way I was going to call my parents' doctor. I was too ashamed of what I had done. I was too afraid of what people would think. I laid there and wondered if I would die that night. My life changed. I became depressed, filled with guilt and shame. I hated myself. So to numb all of that pain, I started drinking, I started doing drugs, and I became very promiscuous. I even attempted suicide several times. That lifestyle led me to two more abortions and a spiral that I could not get out of. It's very common for women to have several abortions because she's trying to replace that baby that she lost. 53% of aborted women are engaged in drug and alcohol abuse. 56% develop suicidal feelings. 39% have eating disorders. 58% battle nightmares, and 86% of women deal with experience and rage, or experience anger and rage. Years later, when I did get my life together and I met a man and wanted to marry and have children, I was unable to because of the damage that the abortions had done to my body. I also had an instruct me years later. You know, I lived with the reality that the only children I would ever carry are killed. Those babies were this size. They were about 12 weeks. I know you can't see this very well, but this baby has a heartbeat, brainwaves, fingers, toes, even fingerprints. This child's side, every organ is functioning and present. This baby can stick out its tongue. This baby can get the hiccups.
Thank you.
I would ask that you would pass this bill. I didn't have a chance to tell you, these are other women who have experienced abortion as well and are hurt.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Francesca Turner, and I am here representing Iowa American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology. I'm here to discuss our stance against the SF 359 bill. Dear committee members, as healthcare professionals serving women, girls, and families in our state, we are in opposition to SF 359 as dangerous and ill-advised. We are committed to healthy pregnancy care and to making sure that every woman can have the best outcome for her pregnancy. Iowa ACOG recognizes that abortion issues, debates come from profound moral conviction from all perspectives. While we respect the need of our members to determine their own personal values and beliefs, we believe that termination of pregnancy is a medical matter that belongs between the patient and her physician, subject to the physician's clinical judgment and the patient's informed consent. We are also deeply concerned what this would do to our OB-GYN program in the state of Iowa. Currently, approximately one-third of our OB-GYN residents from University of Iowa graduate and remain in the state. Iowa already ranks next to last in OB-GYNs physicians per capita, and two-thirds of the counties in Iowa have no practicing OB-GYN physician. Losing our OB-GYN residency would deal a devastating blow to women's healthcare in our state. Iowa ACOG respectfully urges you to oppose SF 359. Not going to discuss my personal, my private citizen. Facts are important. Abortion rates in the United States are the lowest since we've been collecting data. In 2013, they were 12.5 per 1,000 women aged 14 to 44. Uganda has the strictest abortion laws in the world, and they have the highest abortion rates: 54 per 1,000. Countries such as Switzerland have the most liberal abortion laws, and their abortion rates are six per thou, huh, six per thousand women. In the last one year, I personally have seen three women buy abortion medication off the internet to do a home abortion. One of those women was in a county ER that did not have an OB-GYN provider. She was lifelighted unto my care. I had to do a life-saving emergency surgery and save her life. She's alive today because I was able to give her the care, but she made a decision. Banning abortions in Iowa will not stop abortions, they'll stop safe abortions. And lastly, facts are important. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maggie Dewitty, and I'm the Executive Director of Iowans for Life and a founding member of the Pro-Life Coalition, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am here to speak on behalf of those who cannot speak. And what you all sitting here know to be true: When there is a heartbeat, there is a life. And if there is a life, that life deserves protection and the rights of all human beings. This is not an issue of religion. This is not an issue of circumstances of how a child was conceived or the world in which they will be born into. This is an issue of civil and human rights. Dr. Alveda King, niece of Dr. Martin Luther King, states, "Abortion and racism are both symptoms of a fundamental human error." The error is thinking that when someone stands in the way of our wants, we can justify getting that person out of our lives. Abortion and racism stem from the same poisonous root: selfishness. Embryology textbooks tell us that the human heart is the earliest functioning organ. As a mother of four children, I can tell you the glorious sound of that first heartbeat. But it wasn't glorious because I wanted those children or planned for those children or had a husband or had a support. It was glorious because it is a signal that new life is present. New life with potential, with hope, with a soul. It created for a purpose beyond all our imaginings. We have no right to snuff that life out. As a woman, I believe strongly in having the right to make decisions regarding my own body. But my right to control my body ends when it infringes on another body, the life of the unborn child. A child with her own beating heart, her own DNA, completely separate from her mother. Don't disregard science in order to continue to spread a culture of death brought to us by the abortion industry. In Iowa, death is determined when the respiratory and circulatory system stops functioning. It's logical to conclude that when those symptoms are functioning, there is a heartbeat and the person is alive. And if alive, that baby, that unique human person deserves the right to be protected. So listen to your heart tonight, but more importantly, listen to your head. Do what you know is the right thing to do here. Move this bill forward to the floor and vote yes to a beating heart. Be the hero here tonight. Stand up for the little guy in the name of human rights and in the name of justice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I am Laura Hesford with the Iowa Coalition Against Domestic Violence. My organization represents the 21 agencies in Iowa that provide direct services to domestic violence victims in every Iowa county. We urge you to oppose this bill. Reproductive health services are an essential component of routine medical care for all women, and domestic violence victims have an acute need for timely access to the full range of reproductive health services, including abortion care. The link between intimate partner violence and negative reproductive outcomes is profound. Restricting access to health services, and in this case prohibiting access to safe, legal abortion, is harmful to women's health. These policies have a far greater impact on the safety of the healthcare services that women receive than on whether they choose to terminate a pregnancy. For victims of violence, this bill negatively impacts their options for safety even more broadly. Approximately one in three women experience rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime, and most women experience this before age 25. Importantly, approximately half of domestic violence occurs in unmarried relationships. Reproductive coercion is an element of relationship violence that occurs when a male partner uses intimidation, threats, and violence to impose his intentions upon a woman's reproductive autonomy, regardless of whether these align with her own choices. This includes acts of sexual violence, sabotaging birth control, and coercing women to become pregnant or carry a pregnancy against her will. Iowa domestic violence service providers reported that overcoming barriers to accessing reproductive health services increases a client's risk for harm from an abusive partner. Numerous women they have served returned to an abusive relationship they wanted to leave and carried an unintended pregnancy at great risk to themselves and their family. Unintended pregnancy is primarily, the primary reason women seek abortion care. It also doubles the risk of domestic violence during pregnancy. And for women with a history of domestic violence, they are four times more likely to be abused during pregnancy than women in a nonviolent relationship. Finally, regardless of the prevalence of domestic violence, homicide by a spouse or intimate partner is the number-one cause of death for pregnant women. It is imperative that access to companies of reproductive health services, including abortion, remain available to all women. I think it is fair to assume everyone in this room is against domestic violence. Yet last year, Iowa eliminated a Medicaid family planning program which reduced access to providers that help women avoid unintended pregnancies, and now this bill. With all due respect, please understand, bills like this make it harder to address domestic violence and do not reflect the reality of women's lives. Directing barriers to access to safe, legal health services feels a lot like reproductive health coercion. Thank you.
Good evening, Representative Neves. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Catherine Keeter, and I represent Concerned Women of America of Iowa, and we strongly support this bill because it speaks to the core rights of us as Americans and specifically as Iowans. Our Declaration of Independence states that life is an inalienable right. In addition, our Iowa Constitution in Article I states, "All men are, by nature, free and equal and have certain inalienable rights," among which are those of enjoying and defending life. There it is again, the protection of life. The protection of life and the value of life is something that is very near and dear to me personally and also to my family. The protection of life and the value of life is something that is very near and dear to me personally and also to my family. My parents were faced with a choice many years ago. My early aunt and my mother's pregnancy of my older brother, my brother was diagnosed with spina bifida. The doctor gave my parents a horrific outcome for what my brother's life and the life of my family would look like. They told my brother that he would, they told my parents that my brother would never walk. He would never have a normal life. He would be a burden on his siblings. He would destroy his family and he would ultimately have no future. After all that and more, the doctor looked at my parents and said, quote, "Abort. Start over. His life is not worth living," end quote. Since when did we get to decide who is worth living, whose heartbeat is more valuable? When my parents made the decision to choose life for my brother, the doctor began to harass, yes, harass my parents to change their mind to choose death for my brother. The doctor romanticized what the murder of my brother would look like. They were going to provide my parents with a beautiful room with an outdoor, a beautiful room with an outdoor view, induce my mom into labor, and they said, "And then you can hold your son in your arms until he dies." What a terrible thing to say to a parent. It wasn't until my dad, who was also a physician, threatened the medical license of this doctor that she finally left my parents alone. Today, yes, my brother does have spina bifida and he has challenges that you and I may never face, but he's a thriving member of society with a master's degree, a full-time job as a teacher. He's lived overseas and he's getting married this spring. And yet, the doctor said his life wasn't worth living. My parents chose life again when they found out they were pregnant with me and they were afraid I may also have a disability. But by the grace of God, I do not have a disability. But for both my brother and I, my parents chose life because my brother and I had our own lives and our own heartbeats, separate from that of our mother. I will end with this. What kind of society are we that would take the heartbeat of our most innocent and defenseless and crush it for our own situational comfort? I know there are horrific situations that happen in the world when a child is brought forth in violence for I have seen it firsthand and walked along the side of many of these women. And I do not discount their pain and the trauma a girl or a woman will endure. I have deep compassion for them. However, when an atrocity is committed against someone, it does not give that person the right to take the life of another. Please protect the heartbeats of the unborn Iowans. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mark Stringer. I serve as the Executive Director of the ACLU of Iowa. The ACLU of Iowa opposes Senate File 359. This is a dangerous, unconstitutional bill and is no more than an attempt to ban all abortions in Iowa, to take away a woman's right to determine what happens to her body. Politicians in Iowa have introduced numerous anti-abortion restrictions in the last two years, including a 20-week abortion ban, a life begins at conception bill, and now this proposed abortion ban at around six weeks. As we know, in 2017, the Iowa Legislature actually passed a 20-week abortion ban with a 72-hour waiting period and medically unnecessary second doctor's visit. Make no mistake, this bill you are considering, both the embryonic or fetal tissue component and the abortion ban at around six weeks will do nothing to support women. In fact, it will do harm to women. It is part of a concerted effort by anti-abortion lawmakers who seek to outlaw abortion altogether. Under Supreme Court precedent, an abortion ban at about six weeks is unconstitutional. Proponents of this six-week abortion ban have made clear in public hearings and media statements that they understand that this bill is unconstitutional, but they are willing to proceed because the goal is to overturn Roe v. Wade and ban all abortions. However you or I feel about abortion, it's not our place to decide for someone else whether or when they should become a parent. Decisions about whether to end a pregnancy, choose adoption, or raise a child are best made by a woman and her family. And so instead of focusing on intrusive mandates that threaten women's healthcare and cause real harm to women, we urge lawmakers to focus on supporting women and their families. The ACLU of Iowa continues to stand with Iowa women and men in the State House today and in every corner of this state in strongly opposing Senate File 359 and we urge committee members to vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pastor Terry Eamon. And if I'd been born today, even with the technology, there's a good chance I probably would have been aborted because I had so many physical ailments. In fact, it took 22 surgeries over the first 44 years of my life to get things straightened out. But along the line, the Lord got a hold of my life and part of ministry is helping people along the way. And I just think if, had I been aborted, how many lives that I've been able to minister to and lives that I've seen changed? What would have happened to those people? And some of the people that I've ministered to are women that have had abortions. And they come and they confide in me and they'll say, "You know what? I've never told anybody this, but 20 or 30 years ago, I had an abortion and I kept it in and it just pours out." The pain and the agony and the shame and it just pours out. Now, the second thing that they'll say, "If I could just go back, if I could just go back and just undo that." Now, the good news is with Jesus Christ, there's a way forward. We can undo what's been done, but we can find forgiveness and healing through Jesus Christ and I'm thankful that I'm able to offer that. Not only am I involved with the birth of people, but I see death. And two weeks ago, I was with somebody. They passed away, a gentleman, and his wife was there. And she looked at me, she said, "Pastor, I think my husband's gone. Would you get the nurse?" And so I went and got the nurse and I told her, I said, "You know, we think, we think he's gone." And she came in, she's a trained professional. The first thing she did, she took out her stethoscope and she placed it on his chest and she said, "There's no heartbeat. He's dead. He's passed on." It's a simple matter of life. And since 1973, we've wiped out one-third of our population to look around this room. Which third should we take out? Which third of humanity should we remove from this room? How many lives have each one of you touched on your life? Can't we stand on the side of life? Can't we give people the chance, the same chance that we've had, to walk on this earth and to make it a better place? Show the good news and the price. Can't we do that? I urge you to support this bill. I urge you to stand up and be counted in this nation and lead in this issue. God will hold us accountable for our lives, including how we handle life. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Debbie Griffin and I am an ordained minister with Christian Church Disciples of Christ and pastor of Downtown Disciples. I oppose Senate File 359 because it denies the right to privacy, which is protected by the 14th Amendment. As a clergy person, I honor and appreciate the privacy and confidentiality of my community members. I understand and honor the sacredness of the human body and I am well acquainted with the spiritual injury inflicted upon people when they are denied autonomy and the dignity of protecting their own bodies. I oppose SF 359 because it denies individuals the right to make important, critical decisions about their own healthcare. SF 359 interferes with the well-being, family life, mental, physical, and spiritual health of individuals who are the best decision-makers for their own health and their own bodies. SF 359 is another example of patriarchal politics and extremist Christian fervor, attempting to force their individual religious beliefs on others, denying people freedom of their religion and autonomy over their own bodies. Additionally, SF 359 is an enormous waste of taxpayer dollars. In every state where this type of ban has been passed into law, it has been subsequently struck down as unconstitutional. But most importantly, SF 359 dehumanizes individuals, objectifies them, and denies them the dignity of making personal healthcare decisions for themselves. Every healthcare decision is unique, personal, and complicated. These decisions are best made by individuals and their healthcare providers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Erin Gingrich and I am an ordained minister in the Unitarian Universalist Tradition. And I am also a mother and I know that nothing has changed my life more than becoming a mother. It changes your body, it changes your biology, it changes your family life, your schedule, everything, your finances. Every woman deserves to consult her faith and her own values when deciding whether or not to carry through with a pregnancy and become a parent. Every woman deserves to consult with her doctor, with her family, to decide if this is what is wise for her and any legislation that attempts to strip a woman of her own faith and to legislate her values for her is immoral. My faith believes that it can be life-giving for a woman to choose to end a pregnancy, that there may be circumstances, we've heard doctors share this evening about their own illness or physical challenges, perhaps a family dealing with addiction, with other mental health issues, or poverty, that it may not be in the best interest of that family as an entity to bring another child into that home. Religious debate has existed over this issue since before Aristotle. Thinking that you can legislate a moral stance is short-sighted. You will not be able to control women's bodies, no matter what you legislate, but instead you will sentence women to unsafe medical practices that put their lives in danger. Any law that mandates pregnancy is immoral. Any law that believes it can end abortion is short-sighted. Any law that attempts to strip a woman of her faith. Who is to say that one's beliefs about the universe are more true than another's? We are a complex society. We do not all share the same understandings of God or if there is or is not a God. Can't mandate that for people. Stripping someone of their own understanding of their faith, of their values, and trying to legislate them for them is immoral. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Roush.
There we go. My name is Jennifer Roush. I am a nurse and I am the Director of Medical Services for Informed Choice of Iowa. We're a network of, we're a nonprofit and a network of fully accredited medical clinics throughout this state. I have been hearing for pregnant women with unplanned pregnancies for the last five and a half years and have seen hundreds and hundreds of women in this state. Women who come to our clinics are supported and told that they are not alone and that we will be there for them every step of the way and this includes after the child is born. We help them obtain resources such as housing, counseling, transportation, baby items, items for their family and financial resources for as long as they need this support and this includes after the child is born. And we are one of many organizations in this state that do this and are ready to do more. We are committed to them succeeding as parents and as individuals. I have done hundreds of ultrasounds, hundreds and hundreds. I have seen those babies as early as six weeks with a beating heart. I've seen them on the ultrasound with independent movement with their own organ systems. They have their own DNA. Oftentimes, they're a different gender than their mother. Ultrasound is a powerful tool for women to see the truth of what is going on inside their womb. I just always tell people, "We love women and we tell them the truth." I've had women say things to me like, "I'm not going to stop that beating heart" or frequently, "This changes everything." In my personal experience, I have never had a woman say that she regretted having her child. I have had them thank me frequently and say that if they had not received the information and care that they did, their child may not be here right now and they are so thankful to have their baby. I've also seen many women struggling with the emotional fallout from an abortion if that is what they have chosen and we are there for them, to love them through their healing process. I have seen patients come in battling depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts. I have seen them having to be hospitalized because of the fallout. Thoughts, their suicidal thoughts, their depression, their anxiety, they often relate back to their abortion experience. Taking a life is not women's healthcare and I urge you to please pass SF 359. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank all of you for attending. I want to thank the public for their testimony and their willingness to come and share on behalf of their own interests, thoughts, ideas. I want to thank the members of the Legislature who attended tonight and have been here for the public hearing. And I also want to thank the Chief Clerk's Office for their very fine job of orchestrating tonight's meeting so it was very well structured and informative. With that, we thank you all for coming and the public hearing is adjourned.
Still the pie.
I just can't get over the loss of pie.
He's just not going to give it up.
I can't give it up.
Did you have pie on 3/14?
Huh?
Did you have pie on 3/14, March 14, Friday?
Ooh, ooh, ooh.
That's the day.
I know what that means.
I'll remember that.
You're smarter than I am.
I'll remember that, actually.
I'm giving them all, you know what I mean?
The voices don't count. Yeah.